Good evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene the Thursday, March ninth meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. We'll begin tonight with pledge allegiance followed by moment aside.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone who has joined here in person as well as anyone who has joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the internet. And copies of meeting minutes and a recording of the meeting will be posted at a later time. Begin tonight, two point three roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt.
President.
Mrs. McCloskey.
Here.
Mrs. Starkey.
Here.
Vice President Ralph there. President Earl Dempsey serving his chair is here. We have all five board members present. Thank you all for being here. Move on to two point four approval of agenda, Mr. Ralph.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
And most floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Out of two point five approval minutes, I make a motion. We approve the meeting match from the February twenty third meeting had written. An emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or destructive on that motion? See none who to vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Now, we're up to two point seven citizens participation opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We do open it at the beginning of each public session. I do not believe we have anyone sign up this evening as Piccolo.
Yeah.
If we had wanted to sign up, we had asked you to or wanted to speak, we'd ask you to sign up at the table at the beginning there. We don't have anyone this evening, so we will reopen this in two weeks at our next meeting. Well, the section three reports start off with three point one. My actual reports, Mr. Kirk Kellerman. Welcome, Kirk.
Good evening. Should be a fairly quick report this evening. This is the monthly board report at the end of February. And as far as the revenue goes, we did actually receive a little bit more than I was anticipating in the division three equalization line there about thirty four thousand. So hopefully that potentially help in avoiding the deficit this year. We cashed in some related service units too. So you see that number significantly more than last month, and that's because we had some vacant positions. We filled those with contracted positions. So we cashed in all the units for the contract to pay the contracted positions. And then the other item is the unique alternatives. That's another area where we received it in the state funds. That covers seventy percent share for our outside placements. That we were previously covering with a hundred percent local tuition funds. So that's a a big win there for us in that particular case with that student. So they picked them up, the student up for the month of December. And so then they gave us the additional state funds to cover that outside placement cost. Down in the local funds line, I project that we will hit our budget target for current expense tax receipts. As it shapes up for the rest of the year, and I did mention in a report reporting forward earlier that we did start collecting our tax or our interest on our local funds again. That's the first time in almost eighteen months that we started collecting interest again. So that's good news. No changes in the federal funds and overall, we've received ninety percent of our projected revenues compared to ninety two percent of last year. Any questions on the revenue report?
Any questions on revenue for Mr. Kellerman?
Moving on to the expenditure side, I predict that we will hit our, or I'm sorry, overall, our February discretionary expenses were nearly identical to last year. Our local audit costs from last year, they come out of our administrative services section, which is about halfway down on that first page. And we did just get news that we're going to be paying about half of what we paid last year for the local audit because they changed their billing process this year, the methodology as to how they bill for the local audit. So it's going to be based on enrollment, school district enrollment this year. So instead of fifteen thousand, I think they said seventy seven fifty this year for our local audit costs.
What was it based on previously?
What was it based on?
Rate for every district.
Rate for every district.
Yep. Yeah.
So we'll see a little bit of savings there in the administrative services. Nothing else really significant to report for the discretionary expenses. As we move into the non-discretionary expenses, the only other significant area where we saw some movement there was the tuition payments. That increased substantially as it normally does this time of year. We paid our our tuition bill for the student, our special ed students attending CR School District, and we still have the outstanding bill remaining for capital and Christina. So that will come in our future on report. But we have thirty four percent of our discretionary budget remaining compared to thirty two percent last year and forty percent of our all funds budget compared to thirty seven percent last year. But that's it for the expenditure side. Any questions?
Any expenditure?
Thank you, Mr. Kellerman. Any questions or expenses for Mr. Kellerman or anything financial related at all?
All right, seen none. Thank you very much, Kirk.
You're welcome.
We're up to three point two superintendent report. Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody. As always, there are a lot of great things going on in the district. So I'd like to take a chance to highlight a few. First, our own Nerdine Ahmad Stats was crowned a hundred and fifty pound DIA double A state wrestling champ. Congrats to him for that amazing accomplishment. Congrats also to the WT Chipmunks girls for finishing first in their division at the state cheer competition. Congrats to them. That is the second year in a row that the girls have won that division. So congrats to them. Good job. Congrats to them and all the winner athletes, coaches and volunteers. Really appreciate everything that they've done. Also like to mention the state FFA convention was yesterday. Many of our students were recognized and Spartan alum Noah Dixon was named state FFA president. Twenty three, twenty four. Great job to the staff and students of FFA and best luck for to Noah in his new role. It's hard to believe at the end of the third quarter is approaching fast with about two weeks left. It's important to know where your student stands and reach out to his or her teacher, school counselor, or principal, if you have any concerns with his or her progress. For other calendar reminders, the high school is presenting Legally Blonde on stage this weekend. Tickets are on sale online. The SAT will be given at the high school on March twenty second. So students should be ready for that. March twenty seventh, there is no school for students for staff development and report cards will be available on the home access center on March thirtieth. I encourage you to keep your eye on the district calendar, stay up on all activities and events. So thank you. And I give the floor back to President Dempsey for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions or discussion for Superintendent Lucas on his report? All right. Thank you again. Three point three LFPA report. Ben Black. It's the Need of Bullshit. Welcome.
Well, good evening. So we as LFPA like to do a scholarship for our seniors. And so we tend to do a different fundraiser each year to try to raise money for at least two scholarships for each for the seniors. So this year we're doing a little bit different. The flyers are out in all the schools. The flyers have been posted. As you can see on the on the desk in front of everybody, each voting is represented by an individual at the CBO. It's Dr. Lucas and Mr. Dempsey graciously accepted the challenge last board meeting. So tonight, it's actually running from now until till the sixth of May on I Love Like Force Day at noon, it closes off. And then at one o'clock, we are doing the pie in the face. The person with the most money in their container at the end at noon on May sixth is the person that gets the pie in the face and the person with the least amount of money and gets to throw their person's pie in the face. And since Dr. Lucas and Mr. Dempsey, the only two with the CBO, I'm starting it off tonight by giving them a donation to get that wonderful pie in their face. So I challenge everybody to please participate so we can get some funds raised for those kids to get their scholarships. Any questions?
Will there be any interim updates as to?
Yes, I'm going to send out weekly update.
Great. Great. Quick comment. Mr. Ralph. So I will say when I returned from even the restroom, I did notice the buckets and I had to quickly count to make sure that we're not six here. And I noticed eight and I said, be decisive because I thought that all of a sudden. Man, we just shut ourselves in the hope by now definitely.
But yeah, it's going to be a fun activity. We have a lot of stuff going on online. I love like force pay. We have a bike raffle for the kids. We have a twenty five dollar gift card for kids. We have a twenty five dollar gift card for staff. There was only some, there's a requirement to do one positive or one negative, and then we will have the scholarship information as well to raise some funding for our students. So thank you for your help. Every building will have it. The CBO will be out front in front of this God's desk. So as you come in, please donate. It's open to kids and staff. So please, the more money we can make, the more money we can give away. Thank you.
Thank you. Great prayer. Mr. Starkey.
So these buckets will be at the schools? Yes, every school will have it.
Great. Thank you both very much. On to section four, discussion items, four point one, the jewel lawsuit.
Good evening again, everybody. Just to bring everybody up to speed, about two years ago, the district agreed voted to join on with the class action lawsuit that fifteen of our colleagues within the state were joining against Jewel Labs Incorporated. Jewel are the little devices that people will consume nicotine. The they Jewel Labs Incorporated essentially sued saying that they were marketing to children and things of that nature. And we became a party to that lawsuit. Good news is that lawsuit has been settled and we as a district have been offered a settlement. Unfortunately, we've been offered the settlement on the contingency that there's a non-disclosure of the details of that settlement. I'm here tonight to suggest or recommend to the board that we that they do agree to the settlement and that we recognize the offer from the Jewel Labs Incorporated, and that is at the recommendation of the attorney that's represented us. So again, I can't, we're kind of required to keep the details of the settlement confidential. However, I'm open for any other questions or discussions. I know it's been a long time since this went up for for this for action.
Questions or discussion from the board on this topic? So it has been some time, but I know we did. I remember at least two meetings publicly where with this discussed and the board considered it and ultimately agreed to to sign one. So the terms of the settlement have been shared with the board, and that is what will come up later in this meeting for a vote for the district to accept. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to section five unfinished business, five point one, finance committee operating referendum. Dr. Lucas.
Thank you again, President Dempsey. We're going to get back to our school finance discussion that we started some time back. We've been working on here for a few months. And if you'll remember about two meetings ago, the board voted in favor of going to referendum on May sixth. So we right away got started with interacting with our attorney and coming up with the necessary paperwork that is going to be required to put this into practice. So what you're seeing on the screen there is the notice of special election that we are required to submit to the board of elections within forty days of the election. Now that is, we are at about fifty five or fifty seven days right now. Which is why we want to push this forward now because there's a good chance that we submit this to the board of elections and they send it back to us for corrections. So basically, if we look at the notice that's being displayed right now, it is basically the who, what, why, and when and where of the election. Starting off with when the election is going to be held, how much we are looking to increase the current expense tax rate. Just as a reminder, we are currently at point nine five oh eight, which is the lowest comparatively to all the Kent County districts. We are looking to increase that year one almost nineteen cents, year two, almost eleven cents, and then year three, seven cents for every hundred dollars assessed value for a total of approximately thirty seven cents at the end of the of year three. If we scroll down a little bit more, as you can see, the average assessed property in Lake Forest School District, we passed it a little bit. That's okay. It was about thirty four thousand dollars. Thank you, Travis. And that would cost the average taxpayer about sixty four dollars in year one of a little Travis, the other way. There you go. Thirty six dollars in year two and twenty four dollars in year three. So if we scroll down a little bit further, we recognize that's going to, the district will realize that much as a result for the year. We can keep moving down Mr. Warren. A little bit more, one more, so we can see. Okay, and these were the skip to past it. Let me get my paper copy.
There you go.
Once again, we're looking for safety, security, transportation services, recruiting and retention, technology. Those are the four biggies. And then also to offset the increased cost of subjects to teachers and continue with our ongoing programs with textbooks, curriculum, instructional programs, and things of that nature. Okay, that that list is not all inclusive. But those are generally the items that we are looking to help fund for the next, hopefully, six years. The last one we got through ten years. So we're hoping to get through the next one, or at least ten year, six year. All right, polls be open from seven to eight. We can keep scrolling down, Mr. Warren. Four polling places are Lake Forest Central, Frederica Fire Hall, Lake Forest North, Lake Forest South. And then our our lawyers provided us with all the necessary absentee ballot information. And again, this has been properly vetted by him. So we're hoping that this goes up to the board of elections and is approved without without delay. Any questions on that document?
Questions on this for Dr. Lucas? So I just will say that, you know, this is, this has been a several month, multiple month process going through committing everything. District has talked about this. We've talked about this openly. Since we got together last, I think we had a neighboring school district that had also announced a similar operating referendum. And just interestingly enough, while our increase is showing what we're requesting is thirty seven cents. I believe theirs was nearly double that at about seventy and a half cents. So just some interesting things that are happening. It's not only us that is feeling this pinch. But I think again, we are showing as much fiscal responsibility as we can and asking for something that we feel comfortable will help us get through and comparing it to a neighboring district with almost twice as much. It's just very interesting to see that.
So what, just for everyone that listens to recent minutes, like what do we, what can we do as a community, as a staff of the district? Like what can we do right now to ensure that this passes? What do you recommend?
That's a great question. And we're going to get to that.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, I can hold off on that. If we can get to the second for Mr. Warren, which is the resolution that I'm going to be asking the board approval tonight. And this resolution again was drafted by our attorney and what we are asking is for the board to approve us forwarding the notice of special elections to the election committee and asking them to review and comment and either accept or return back to us. If you could scroll down a little bit just so everybody can get a look at the entire message. And again, a little, a little bit of of legal speak essentially confirming that we agree that we will conduct the election in accordance with all the applicable laws and that we will respond to any of the corrections or or choices that the the board of elections requires us to to change. It is like, it is possible that should the board of elections kick this back, that the board would have to vote again on a on a final a final version if the board of elections were to make need any substantial correction. I think it's pretty clean and I don't anticipate that. Any questions on the resolution?
Questions on the week so far? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warren, if we could. There we go. So we've made it a little easy for the community to do really getting informed about the the referendum on our main page. Now on the website, we've added the tab right there at the top, just as referendum. And if you click on that, I just want to bring you up to speed. We are going to be holding community events. They're listed there. They're all at six thirty PM at at each of our each of our schools. And that will give the community an opportunity to come out and hear and ask questions, everything that they want to know in person about the referendum. We've also added the frequently asked questions and maybe we can get a preview of the frequently asked questions, Mr. Warren. And again, this is just some really good information that we've compiled. There's about four pages right now. I had a question last night that I added at the end of it, and we will continue to do that practice as we get questions from the community that have not been added to this list. We will go ahead and add them for everybody's information just to keep again, keep continuing to keep this current and keep people informed. We could go back. I wanted to show just a couple of other really nifty features we've added. We're keeping all our documents and references there along the right side and our meeting notes and our committee recordings will be on the left side. And then if we go down just a little bit further, Mrs. Piccolo got our Thrill Share people to add this amazing calculator. So if you know your assessed property value, you can punch it right in there. So Travis, you could just plug in there, let's say thirty five thousand dollars, which is just a little more than the average assessed value of property in the Lake Forest School District. And we can see how that works, calculate tax estimate. And that gives the taxpayer an idea of how much the increase is going to be monthly and on a yearly basis. So some pretty nifty features that are on there right now. What we can do, all of us who are in favor of this referendum is talk to our neighbors, talk to our friends, tell them how they can get the information, point them to this website, point them to the community information sessions that are going to be held. We're also going to be sending some information home with our students and our staff. And get out and vote. The most important thing we can do is on May sixth is get out and cast our vote. And if we can get all the people who care to vote, I think we'll be fine.
Mr. Starkey.
Like I think, maybe this is already on the plan, but it's not like I think some social media posts frequently and encouraging our staff and community to share that that has a link to this. I think it'd be really, that's an easy way. That's the best way to get information out even more than hard copies of stuff. So.
Will do. Yeah. Any other questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas?
March fifteenth, we will have a meeting of this strategic planning finance committee to talk about outreach. And that is where we will put together that outreach plan is this Wednesday and it's by Zoom. So anybody can attend. Anybody that wants to jump on with us and get the word out. We really appreciate any help we can get.
And where is that moving? How do we access that? It's in like, I can't see that. Sorry.
Uh, that's not in on. It's not on here, but I did send it out. I'll send it out again. Yeah, sorry if you didn't get that.
Okay, anything else for Dr. Lucas on this topic? I think there's anything else. I think that's it. Okay, so the two documents that were shared will come up. Lee, you ready?
I think we've got them for action right now.
Oh, yes. So this is unfinished business. So it is an action that will stick around. I have a motion to approve resolution five point one, school finance committee operating referendum. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Lucas.
Thank you.
We're on to section eleven personnel, Mr. Ralph.
Second level part on transfer, the making motion to approve resolutions one point one through eleven point three as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section thirteen personnel offers of employment and make a motion. We approve resolutions thirteen point one through thirteen point four as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded and questions and discussion on that motion? Here none have moved to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section fifteen personnel leaves of absence and make a motion, we approve resolutions fifteen point one to fifteen point four as written. Emotional floor properly seconded and question discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section nineteen personal commitments, make a motion, we approve resolutions nineteen point one and nineteen point two that are emotional floor properly seconded and questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section twenty one other business and make a mission, we approve resolution twenty one point one school choice as written.
Okay.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Continuing in section twenty one of the business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty one point two jewel lawsuit as written. Emotional floor properly seconded and questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. And finally, section twenty three other business financial reports, make a motion, we approve resolution, excuse me, yeah, resolution twenty three point one. Financial report for month venture for February as written. Or did we skip twenty two?
We did.
My mistake. I apologize. We retract your motion and that's really, thank you. So section twenty two other business field trips. I make a motion, we approve resolutions twenty two point one and twenty two point two as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries fines. And now finally, section twenty three, let's make a motion, we approve resolution three point one. Word financial report for everyone as written.
Okay.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Thank you, Starkey. We're on to section twenty five, board report and discussion items, twenty five point one. Now our school board association, Mrs. Starkey.
Mrs. McCloskey, actually, we attended for, yes.
I did. I, it was at Roma, we discussed for the new business, we talked old business about the lead and how that was going through all the districts and what was going on with that. The main thing we discussed were that there were, Dr. Minenucci leaving in in the summer, that there are some well qualified responses for the executive director candidates. And that the leaders, executive leadership team are reviewing the resumes with potential interviews being conducted in April. There was, we talked about some bills that had just kind of been discussed, nothing that's been brought up yet. And then also there was about the electric thing that we discussed before and how we really should still reach out maybe to tell our electric and have meetings because they are conceding to some things. So that was something to for us to continue to live on. For a solar, I think solar.
Okay, great.
That's all.
Any questions or discussion for Mrs. McCloskey? Thank you for attending. Thank you for the report. We are above two twenty five point two legislative committee, Mr. Ralph.
We have not met since our February first meeting. Next meeting is April point six. One thing I would just mention, there was an email circulated yesterday by Dr. Minenucci where he was contacted by a legislator who was considering filing a bill that would reduce the voting age for school board elections from eighteen to sixteen. And that legislator had asked for feedback from the DSBA prior to filing that bill and it was now open one opposition for various reasons, including criticizing school board elections. Convergence range such as if we're going to lower the voting age for school elections, it should be all all elections, not just. Um, comments range such as if we're going to lower the uh voting age for school elections, it should be all all elections, not just school boards. Things like that. So um, I thought that's kind of interesting, but other than that, um, there's been no discussion of meeting. And like I said, our next meeting is April twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Ralph? Legislative committee, thank you. Uh, we're up to twenty-five point three. Good in order opportunity for board members to address the other items not covered housewarming agenda. The floor is open. Mrs. Starkey.
Um, I just wanted to say that I went to the Black History Celebration um and everywhere. It was just amazing. So anyone who had anything to do with that, just really, really, really special. Good job.
Great. I'm just starting.
And well attended. I mean, I've been to a few. I feel like this has been, this is the most well attended.
Thank you. Floor is open for anything else. Um, I do have a couple just following that. This is Starkey's comment. Remember, uh, you're starting tonight, right across the way is the Legally Blonde. Um, so I have my tickets for tomorrow night. I wasn't able to make that one by him making uh Legally Blonde. Uh, so tomorrow night and Saturday night are left for us. Twenty twenty-three school board election uh filing period ended uh this past Friday, uh Friday the third. Uh, there was one, only one candidate who filed for that seat, and that was our own Mr. Mrs. Jordan McCloskey. Uh, so we will not have an election uh this year, and Mr. McCloskey will uh be sworn in in July for another four years. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And condolences. Dr. Lucas, where is that? The first bin over there is that yours?
Uh, no, this is mine. I was thinking of giving you my ten dollars. It started off with a red foot.
Um, our next meeting uh is two weeks from tonight. So that will be Thursday, March twenty-third, and we are at Lake Forest South Elementary. We will be doing one of our uh road trips there. So does anyone have anything else? I think you do need an executive session. Yes, we will need an executive session. So if we close, uh good in the order, entertain a motion for executive session. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none. Um, we will uh move to a vote. All those in favor. I, any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five and zero. We will uh adjourn into executive session seven thirty-nine P M. Um, for anyone who is interested in staying while we come out, we only anticipate coming out to adjourn. So um, if you more than welcome to hang out until the board has done executive sessions, you just need us adjourn. Otherwise, we'll see you again in two weeks. Thank you.